Today we have a few updates to the published agenda. First is that we will not be opening bids for the demolition project on Clarinet and Borough, mainly because there are no bids. And Pam reminded us, we spent $1,300 in paper for that and then did not get any responses. It's just, we're just getting killed by advertising all these things. We're not getting responses. The second is guaranteed energy savings projects. Pam, would you tell us this update on that?
We received two bids, one we cannot open because it did not come in until 11:40 and the deadline was 11:30. And that was from McClure Company. The other one we did receive was from ABM. I'll open that one.
So this is a bid with professional services, so as I recall, there's not going to be any price increases.
So am I to understand they're like 10 minutes late? And so we can't entertain their bid at all? Not even if we make a motion to do that?
Well, I guess that would be up to the commissioners, but the advertised bid, they had to be here by 11:30.
So they missed it by 10 minutes?
It is a professional service bid, so it's an RFQ, not, so I don't think it falls under the same rules. Probably could open it.
That's a call for the commissioner. I would be interested in opening it.
To my understanding, it's a professional service agreement, so I don't know why we've, I mean, if Commissioner Morrison is interested in opening it, I would open it.
Okay. Why don't you open it up? But before that, Tyler, or ABM's here, did you want to walk us through anything in the proposal in particular, or anything out?
No, I think it's mirrored off their request for qualifications there, so it's 25 pages with each section that you asked for. And then there's a lot of financials there, too. I'm not into financials in that, please don't kind of make that so heavy for Pam. I think the executive summaries are understanding of your goals and initiatives for the project and then there's the project development schedule, things like that. So capital volatility analysis is something that we talked about, that's highlighted in detail in there.
Stephanie, that's key.
It's really qualifications, to your point, it's qualifications more than it is a bid.
Right. I think I asked this once before, but if we were able to do some of these projects, how quickly do you think we'd get them done? Because we do have the bicentennial coming up next year, so you know, I'd kind of like, for instance, to get the place painted and painted and that sort of thing before the bicentennial celebration. Do you think that's feasible time-wise?
Yeah, absolutely. So that was one of the things we understood to be a major priority for the county was getting a lot of the improvements done before next summer. Generally speaking, the engineering and final design of a project takes 16 to 90 days. Then you could officially award whatever that final scope was probably in that, like in November or December timeframe. And then that would give you, my understanding would be maybe four or five months to get a lot of that work done prior to the bicentennial celebration.
So, to clarify, Tyler, not absolutely, hold on. So if her emailed us asking to meet, and as you all, as the board would remember, I just responded saying, "Let's not talk about this in your email, let's talk about it in the board session." My perspective on it is that we put this out a month ago and, you know, they had a month to come schedule a meeting with us. I'm unenthusiastic about the idea of postponing voting on this on Wednesday because they didn't reach out to us until now. That said, if we can set something up like tomorrow or Wednesday morning, I'm all for it. Maybe even just a phone call? What do you think? By the way, I would be more concerned about only having one or two bids, except that this is regulated by the public utilities. And at least ABM is co-starred. Oh wait, what do you mean? Co-starred?
It's actually, it's a co-star equivalent. It's called scheduling for, it's actually federal government, but it is a pre-approved federal government vetted app. I believe it's 21 or 22 ESCOs that essentially local governments can piggyback on federal legislation and pick off the prudeness if you wanted to, but you often do go through the RFQ process and advertise.
Sure. Sure, I'm surprised we only got two bids. Anyway, who do you think, want to review this over the next day or so?
I'd like to compare the two.
Okay. Well, of course, you know, but I guess we can be thinking about it, it's on the Wednesday agenda. If you feel comfortable picking one on Wednesday, then let's do it.
If they're available over the next two days, then we'll schedule.
So Pam, can you, I'll forward you the email right now. Can you reach, oh wait, can you contact them, we should run here, so can you contact them and see if we can get something set up? And if it's just a phone call today or tomorrow, I mean, well, yeah, today or tomorrow or Wednesday morning?
Yeah, but I don't think Wednesday's too soon to review and then vote on it.
I'll look at these later today. Okay. Next on the agenda was Deborah Snow regarding the depository tax bid. She is not coming to this meeting and will be coming to, did you say this coming Wednesday's meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go on that. RW Larson Elevator and Parking Lot Projects. Jeff, did you want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, so I wanted to let you know that we met with RW Larson regarding the elevator projects. Basically, they had put together architectural drawings and, you know, items related. And basically what we're going to do is digitize them and circulate them amongst the commissioners, but I basically told them to start moving forward with bid documents for the JL elevator in order to get that ready to bid out for next spring. The JL elevator needs to be replaced. The cost that they estimated was in line with what we had had previously, a little slightly less. And then I think that, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, we'll have to sit down and review the pitch that they made essentially for the courthouse elevator, which is on the south side of the building, which is the older of the, which is the oldest elevator in the structures.
Is their open half of that?
Yeah, they, basically, you know, basically they looked at it, there's electronics that need to be replaced in order to have it be, you know, in tip-top shape. They pitched a rehab of the elevator itself in order to, you know, kind of make it, you know, to upgrade it essentially to a place where I think that we would feel more comfortable with it. And I think that's something that we need to review with them because that's a little bit beyond the scope of what we'd initially discussed. And then, so there's that. They're going to be doing, we'll probably schedule another meeting to go over the parking lot situation. They, they basically had the lot surveyed and then it's basically ready to, they're ready to kind of move forward without their final pitch on setting up the sidewalk that runs next to the building, basically regrading, digging up the parking lot and redoing it. And, you know, fixing a lot of issues we have with water, you know, pools of water. One of the things that they're going to look into is the water that gathers on the Fourth Avenue entrance, which is a real problem. And then they're going, what's going to end up happening as part of that plan is the, the handicap spots will move around to right out front of the entrance, the main entrance. And then the Fifth Avenue entrance will move west and be expanded. And then that will create a straight line to drive through the middle of the lot rather than having to weave through.
Right. There's a lot of blind spots we can see now.
Yeah. And so that should, that should help with traffic flow. And then also all of the parking spots will be shifted from an angled spot to a straight pull-in. A lot of that has to do with, I'm not really sure why it was designed the way it was, but angled spots take up more space, so there's less parking spots, you know. So hopefully with a lot of the changes that we're doing by angling them straight, that'll mitigate any lost spots as a result of adding a sidewalk and a few other things. Actually, the goal's hopefully going to be to gain some, we'll see.
What do you think in terms of timeline?
Well, we have to wait until, you know, basically Matt's charged with staying on top of them to get the revised design. They had spent the past couple of weeks doing surveys of the lot and that's where they got final details in order to put the final plan together. So basically, my hope is, my understanding is to have a final plan within the next two weeks that we can vote on, you know, make a determination as to whether we're going to do it. The JL elevator, I think, should be done in spring. Like, I think that we should do that. And then the parking lot, if we're going to do that with all the other stuff that's going on, I think that that should be bid out now in order to get it lined up for the spring, to get a contractor lined up to do it.
Okay. Good. Any questions regarding the elevator or parking lot? Okay.
I have a question. Are you going to widen the parking spaces for cars or are they going to make them a little more narrow?
Would, I mean, from my perspective, the wider the better.
Yeah, because you have to allow for handicapped people. I think when you do parking lot now, they say they have to be a little wider so a handicap person that doesn't use the handicaps, parking spot has to have availability to get out of his car, he or she. And if you notice that in the parking lots that they have done throughout the county, the parking area for vehicles is wider than what it used to be.
I would believe RW Larson knows what to, how to put that in, right?
Yeah, I mean, when the lot was originally done, I'm sure that the conversation was, "Let's pack it with as many spaces as possible." And so there are very tight parking spaces, which creates a liability for everybody, you know, including the county. That's one thing. The second thing is, is I don't like being squeezed in.
Yeah, I'm strong for that.
Yeah, in any situation, I would, I would rather have fewer spots and have them be easier, easier to get out of than to have, to get, you know, 10 extra spots and then basically make it impossible to pull anyone out of the building. So that'll be part of the discussion, you know. We're going to try to mitigate whatever loss of spots that we can.
So you're going to lose some parking spaces with the new arrangement?
I would say that there's a real possibility that we'll lose some. Like, it's hard to say how that'll, how it'll shake out. We have to see their final design. The original one that they had had more spots being lost, a lot of it had to do with they, you know, proposed adding greenery and different things, which is nice, but, you know, everybody here wants more parking. So, you know, we're going to try to do both. You know, the goal's going to be to make the lot safer for everybody. That's the fundamental goal. So hence the sidewalk that runs along the entirety of the building so that people don't walk through the lot, which they do quite good now. And then also creating a channel for drivers so that we can avoid having to make turns through the lot as much as possible.
Very good. Anything else? All right. Next on the agenda, 2018 budget sessions for 2019. I believe Eric emailed us out, although I can't recall specifically myself seeing it. The idea is, in the past, the commissioners, meaning the previous boards and us for the first couple of years, held budget meetings in non-public meetings. So we would bring in department heads in order to pitch what they needed and would discuss it amongst ourselves and then, of course, bring the finished product to a public Other counties, some counties do that, but it seems to be going away. And the sunshine law, I think, would indicate that that's probably not a good way to be doing that. So I would like to shift to a model where we have budget hearings. Each office will have a chance to come before the board on a specific date and time in order to pitch their budget. We can then discuss a Nazim in that meeting and not be concerned with any sunshine violations. So fiscal and chief clerk have come up with a schedule. The idea is to block off most of the day of October 1st, October 3rd, and October 4th. Actually, it looks like half of the 1st, all of the 3rd, and half of the 4th.
Does that interfere, if we're in this room, with the assessment appeals that week? Would it?
Oh.
My office is not available that week. There will be a training.
Okay. Well, we'll have to make some exceptions, but either way.
Well, this room won't be available.
Yeah.
Fine, we'll find another room. Anyway, that is the general idea. The departments will have to turn in a capital spending budget so that we can come up with a capital asset plan. And then the operating budget and departmental narrative, so basically describing any major changes. They will not need to come up with the current salary report, so I believe fiscal will generate that. Anyway, if you have any chance to look at it, take a look at that.
I told Eric last week that I thought what they came up with was really good. And I think that, I think it all worked. From my understanding is, it's based off of what the Hancock County currently does. They have a very good, robust public hearing process and they found that it's very much helps with budgeting and just transparency, public information.
Yes. He brought me the current printed versions, I don't know. I don't think it's good.
No, I didn't think it was good. So I guess at this point, we, we would start the discussion with the directors through Eric and then depending upon what their schedule is, like, we would work around that. And then also this issue of the room would have to be figured out, which I'm sure.
How about you just keep that up?
Would it be, would it be very interesting to do it at a neutral location? Like, not have it here?
Doesn't matter to me.
There's other conference rooms.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just to have the ability for the public to attend. This is the first time we've been doing something like this. I doubt, I doubt anybody's going to drop their, you know, drop everything to come watch a budget hearing. I'm just saying.
Right, yeah. Joe and Josh.
We've got to get our Joe Scully questions ready in advance.
I'd play two chairs.
Two chairs?
Yes.
Would you like refreshments, Joe?
No, I don't feel that political people should produce food in any meeting. You're not there to eat, you're there to learn. And you may leave that on the table.
Anyway, we could do the law library or something if it's just going to be, you know, a department head, three commissioners, clerk, fiscal, and a few public, you know, what, 10 people? Sit around there. So whatever. I'm not worried about the details. I'm just saying, this is the schedule, this is what's happening and the public's not aware that this is happening. We'll advertise it in the near future, obviously, since it'll be a public meeting. All right, next on the agenda, hiring policy process. But, oh, sorry, I thought I heard someone. There's been enough confusion as to the process by which people are hired by Warren County, particularly as it pertains to row offices, because they do have 1620 rights, meaning they can hire, fire, you know, use people out as they choose. But that was sort of written before federal and state law really kicked in and regulated a lot of things. Therefore, HR, county provided HR, needs to be involved in every hiring from top to bottom. So to clear up some misunderstandings about it, I went ahead and created a employee hiring process document.
You wrote those.
Well, they're very clear. Once I make one, people are pretty clear on it.
I can see your antennas, though.
So anyway, I've given a draft to HR to take a look at, but actually Pam and I did this, what, a couple of months ago?
Been a while.
And it just hasn't been kind of finalized. I brought it to the meeting here to say, "Take a look at it, if you have any objections to it, raise it with Eric. Eric will implement any that he agrees with and then we will come back." This, I mean, the thing will be documented in the employee handbook or handler policies and procedures. So this is really just sort of a diagram workflow in order to give to every office so they can kind of reference it when they're going through the hiring process.
I think that's great. I think if Kim looks at it, she's comfortable with it, then that definitely needed.
All right, next, let me just ask real quick, since this is, I mean, DAV ports, where do, you want to tell us what that is and where did the budget issue come from?
Yeah, no, I haven't had a chance to look at this, actually. So basically, the DAV moved out of the, and I've talked about this before, moved out of experiences and bridges building at the request of the Rous in order to provide more room for the bridge's operation. They moved to the state hospital grounds where they have a space available there, as far as I know, at no cost. They previously stored their vehicles in the winter in the parking garage and that was in order to prevent snow from covering them in any kind of a meaningful way. A lot of it has to do with the fact that they have volunteers, it's an all-volunteer organization, many of them are seniors and they want to try to minimize the amount of snow that they have to shovel off of vehicles in order to, you know, and be covered from the elements. So as a thank you and as a, to work in support of the DAV and the efforts that they have, I went up and met with them and then talked about getting carports, three carports for their vehicles so that they could park in there and then, and then have them covered during the winter. The county would own the carports and then if they move from the location or something changes, you know, we'll either move them or whatever, you know, or reclaim them depending upon the situation. And then, like I said, they would be, now, my thing with funding this is, is one piece was to, I was going to go to the Rous Board and then request that the Rous also help just, you know, at least in setting this up. And then, you know, the county would pitch in and then we could even hypothetically go and do fundraising for it, you know, to try to see if we could get a couple other donations in order to help with the cost. And I had Matt go out and do a search. They found these semi-permanent stalls that basically have a covered roof and then minimize snow. And the total cost for three carports was $3,500, so it's roughly a little over $1,000 per carport. And I think that it's the least that we can do for them being that nice to move and just to support the organization. Does it have to be built today, right now? No. And the $3,500 doesn't include an install, so we won't have to do anything to install them. And that's it. Just to, you know, say thank you and then to just be supportive of their efforts. They have, they have a hard time getting people just generally to volunteer for that organization and think that the more we can do to help facilitate what they're doing, even, you know, even in this minor way, that's helpful.
Okay. Very good. Any objection from the board to buying carports for the DAV? To be clear, the county owns it, so if they move and like go back to the parking garage or something, we can take them and use them for public safety vehicles or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Morrison?
You're saying it's $3,500 in total and then you mentioned contacting the Rous Board and fundraising, so would that offset this?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, my, I would ask the Rous to divvy up something to help support it. They, they left this space, which they had free, you know, the, you know, it was, the organization had volunteered to them. But they, you know, they packed all their stuff up and moved just so the, the Rous could expand. I think that it would be good for them to support.
Oh, I have a negotiation chip for you.
Oh, yeah.
The garage at the Department of Public Safety needs to be worked on. It's, it's had tarps on it, it's had trees growing out of it, windows falling out. I believe the Rous found a contractor that was willing to put a trussed roof on it and such for seven grand or something like that and asked that the county chip in half of that since we're the ones using it. Since it's the same price, maybe you could suggest that we'll buy the DAV stuff and the Rous pays for the entire project to work on the garage, since it is after all their property improvement.
Yeah.
And they probably have a lot more money. I say that's an excellent idea.
However, you know, I'm fine with that.
Do your best, but if it comes down to it, we have to pay $3,500 in order to support the DAV and all.
Yeah, now, they do very good work. I think that they're worthy organization for that kind of support.
Well, if we get it done in less than a year and a half, because I believe we've been talking about these carports for about a year and a half, and the snow would shortly come.
No.
And if you ever drove for DAV, yeah, there are a lot of senior people and it's a good organization, but I've noticed in, if I check my notes back, it's been a while since it was brought up and it was brought up at a commissioners' meeting. I do believe it'd be nice.
I think it was this spring is when I was talking about it.
They moved, they moved last winter, like in January, so, you know, yes, this has been, this hasn't necessarily been as much of a focus in practice, like.
Yeah. Everybody they take is, you know, form of a medical problem.
How close are those going to be together? And the reason I ask that is, force no removal of the top of the carport.
Well, I think that we would talk to the company that's installing them to get a sense of what their recommendations are and then install them according to those recommendations. Like, you know, I understand what you're saying, that you're just going to pile up a bunch of snow, you know, knock it off.
They will collapse and have one do it. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't really sound like something needs to be brought forward to commissioners. Instead, since you have knowledge, why don't you deal with it?
We'll talk to Matt.
I have no problems with that.
Well, we can talk to Matt about it and ask him what his thoughts are, too, so.
Okay. Last thing on the new item of discussion, microloan program. I, at various meetings, have pointed out that the gig economy, quote-unquote, is growing, meaning self-employed freelancers and... meaning self-employed freelancers, and used to be 10, 15% of the population. It's expected by 2020 to be 40% of the population, according to Forbes and other major news organizations. And I believe, I believe Rand recently had a very similar report, it was close to 40% as well. Warren County has about 1,500 or so businesses, which, you know, is probably more like 15% of our workforce currently, which tells me that if the nation is going in the direction of having more and more freelance-type small businesses, we should be braced for the same kind of growth. Warren County just tends to lie behind the national average. So we need to prepare for the new gig economy that's coming down the pike. And I think that there's several things that we can do in order to prepare for that and to facilitate small business growth. Those include creating coworking spaces, which we're currently doing with the WCCBI at the PNC building, building accelerators, coming up with mentorship programs so we could partner with SBDC or create our own. And of course, high-speed internet is an absolute necessity as well, since many of these businesses are primarily working over the internet. One final thing that is needed is capital. Unlike major businesses, they usually are not nearly as capital-intensive per employee. If you're going to build a big manufacturing plant somewhere in Warren County, that's obviously going to be millions in construction and such. To start a little freelance business is probably more on the $3,000, $5,000, $10,000 range. But the problem is, if you're going after the big projects, there's the Governor's Action Team, the Northwest Commission, there's loan programs, banks are interested. Problem is that when you come for a small amount of money on a new business idea, it's really hard to get anybody to pay attention to you, even if it's very, very simple, straightforward business. It's still far, very hard to find capital at times. So I was thinking about this and remembered a model that I became familiar with called program-related investment. Basically, the IRS allows 501(c)(3)'s to make for-profit investments as long as the interest made on that is under market rate. And then the money that is brought back in from the for-profit investment needs to be turned back around to do something that supports the mission of the nonprofit. So I've seen a couple of supporting organizations, SOs, pop up under an existing nonprofit and then do this program-related investment, where they'll give small microloans to small businesses at low interest and usually with no collateral. I think that the community would step up and create such an organization, and then through small donations from individuals, they could build a pot, the individuals get the tax rate off, and then that pot of money could then be a revolving loan fund for small business development. My proposal is to do that in Warren County, and I haven't decided what organization would necessarily do it. I could approach one of the foundations or one of the economic development organizations. It just needs to be a 501(c)(3) that we create a supporting organization under. What I'm asking you of this board is to see if you have an appetite to kickstart it. I want the foundations to be the ones that fund it, but would we be willing to maybe take some money out of the endowment funds, for instance, out of maybe next year's money in order to pay for the legal fees and use as a match to go to the other foundations and pitch the idea? So I'm thinking, one I asked was done for about $10,000. That was when SOs were relatively new, and that's just talking legal fees. So let's say it's half that now. Please, say we could get five organizations involved, maybe that's a thousand. So would we be willing to take $1,000 or $2,000 out of endowment funds in order to kickstart this nonprofit?
I'd like to know and really think about it, but I'd like you to put that in some sort of a proposal and give it to us, if you would.
Okay. Anticipating that, grab to it.
I think it sounds great. I think that's, it's something that was done in some form or another years ago, but I think it's definitely needed, you know, especially in conjunction with, you know, training programs, education. Because I would say, aside from the capital issue, the other big challenge that we have is having entrepreneurs that are educated in managing a business and, and creating long-term sustainability plans. But those two combined, I can think of a number of businesses that would, that would benefit from a program like that, especially just to spur growth. I guess my issue more is that I don't know that I would want to use the endowment fund money. I would, I would prefer that we use something along the lines of the ARA bank account, like development-type funds to do something like that. Especially after we get the loan back from the WCDI, I would much rather take a portion of that and then sync it into the loan program. We, we've got to kickstart some of these entrepreneurial businesses. When you look at the history of Warren County, especially over the past 80, 90 years, the bulk of the really comprehensive, dynamic businesses that we have that have employed people were all started here. Were small shops that grew and got into a niche that was expanding, you know, and I think you can take a look at a, at a company like McKistock, and I think that's kind of the type of, you know, growth enterprise that we want to see in the community and everything we can do to help spur that better.
Very good.
It's before your time, but, but you've been on the city council, but I do believe the city had a revolving loan fund, or fund several years ago. Are you familiar with that?
Mr. Scott?
Didn't, didn't we try this one on the time with the incubator over on the south side? We had a furniture company in there, we had a brewery in there. Do we have anything in there now that was beginning?
Oh, yeah, it's almost full. In fact, the impetus for the idea was that a local farmer approached me, asking for a $5,000 to $10,000 loan. So I called the Northwest Commission and everybody I could think of, and we couldn't find anybody that was willing to finance something that small. And he wanted to work out of the incubator space. So, so far, it's not been able to come up with capital. So actually, I think, to your point, that fund is actually probably a very good idea to pull from for that, because it's economic development, and for that matter, the first thing, the first, you know, organization that, or self-employed person that approached me is, you know, a farmer.
I have a question. Would it be available to municipalities? Say, there is something that they wish to purchase, they need a loan, floating them a, a low-interest-rate loan?
I think that the scope of the organization, I mean, if it fit within the scope of the IRS 1023 form, that's in, and then yes. But I don't think that that's the purpose. If the municipalities need loans, they have avenues to go get loans.
I, okay, so I would say, I, I think that that's an apples-and oranges situation. The only reason I say that is, what you're talking about is specifically economic development. I, I think that we should have a conversation about something for municipalities. I think that's kind of a separate thing, because there are a lot more tools to create that kind of a system, like, that already exists. You know, and one of the things that eventually I'd like to have a conversation about is like an infrastructure bank or something along those lines, where we work in collaboration with the state and others in order to create, you know, bulk, low-interest loan programs so that they can, we can save based on the county's credit rating and a number of other things to give them options to finance.
The scope of this supporting organization would have to be limited to the people that cannot get financing otherwise.
Yep.
Like municipalities are established organizations with a credit history that can go to the bank and get loans. I'm talking about a small startup business that's too small to be of any interest to a bank or lending institution.
Yeah. It, it, I mean, it would just be something that you would just have to set up a betting program, so they...
Oh, yeah. And I don't want to get into the details here, but, you know, of course, the questions we'll have to answer is, you know, right, does the business have to physically be in Warren County, or does it just have to be a resident, or, you know?
Does it serve a purpose that we are trying to, you know, initially, we're trying to address anyway?
So all that needs to be sorted out. I don't have that level of detail. At this point, I'm simply asking if there was an appetite to pursue the idea. And if there is, then I'll put effort into it.
I definitely think it's, it's worth looking into.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Public comment?
I, I have just one minor thing really quick. I wanted to add to the agenda for the Wednesday meeting, a proclamation on Suicide Convention, Awareness Month being September as well. It goes in line with the recovery month, or proclamation, I just wanted to add that. So I'm going to write that up after we get out of here and then send it to Pam.
All right.
And I'm going to probably invite Kerry Swanson, too.
Very good.
To this thing, and discuss that as well.
Sounds good. Since we jumped out of that item, is there anything else on the meeting for Wednesday that needs to be on?
There may be, I believe September is Stevens-Johnson Syndrome Awareness Month, and if it is September, I'd like to add that to the agenda as well. I guess it's September. Stevens-Johnson Syndrome.
Okay. And I will probably be at the Farm Bureau luncheon at that point, so Commissioner Morrison, are you, are you able to run the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure I'll be in attendance. Very good. And I think I'll still need a call-in, it's just I'll physically be at the...
We're having a hearing prior to the meeting. Yeah, it's just so that Lori can get their, the 2018 proposals coming in for the CDB defense.
Okay. Very good. And we have the, we are able to phone in from the Jackson, right?
I honestly could not tell you.
Okay. If we can't, then I guess I'll physically come and see. Anyway, back to, is there anything else for the agenda Wednesday? Okay. Public comment, Mr. Scott.
I have a question. Back couple, a couple of your township meeting, I don't know. Commissioners meeting, we brought up this snow, I believe, that owed back taxes, and she bid on a sheriff's property that was for sale.
She placed a bid on a repository property, I believe, as her husband or someone who's related to her in business who has delinquent property taxes.
Yeah, and if, I, I mean, if delinquent taxes are owed to a municipality, how can somebody bid on a share, a sheriff's sale and get it when they can't pay their delinquent taxes to their municipality? And then I believe you were going to have your solicitor look into it to see if he could, we could prevent that kind of stuff? I mean, she has back taxes, and now she wants to buy a property at a reasonable price, but she can't pay her taxes, so how can they, how can we prevent them?
Just to be clear, the commissioners can reject any bid for any reason.
I realize that.
So the goal with this and, and situations like it is to create a process that, or policy that, so that it's uniform. You know, in some cases, there are clear lines of distinction between the person and whoever the associate is that owes back taxes. In other cases like this one, there's a little bit more research than we think we have to do, so part of it is to ask them to come and speak, much the same way we do with the Blight Review Committee, where we have people come in and pitch their, what their plans are for a particular property. You know, we want to encourage people to purchase the properties, you know, in the sheriff's sale, but at the same time, we want to make sure that their, you know, intentions are, are good and that they're not utilizing, you know, the system.
Treasury agents, and if they owe back taxes on other properties, they don't, and they get one through the sheriff's department, there's no guarantee they're going to pay the property taxes on that. So we have another one that sits on a book in municipalities and boroughs and townships.
My, my point is, is that our goal is to prevent the people who owe back taxes from purchasing properties on the repository list. Yeah, if they come in, they have to pay their taxes, they can't purchase from the repository list.
All right.
That's clear. However, this instance, it's not as clear, because the developer does not owe delinquent taxes. However, the business, she's an owner of that business, association with that business is not clear.
So, but she wants to buy a thing, okay, I understand. We got to prevent that kind of stuff from people being able to buy properties that owe...
That's probably trying to bring us forward to that.
Right. And as a reminder, she's coming to the Wednesday meeting, so we'll be able to ask her.
I'll ask her.
Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Ebert?
Yeah, I have a couple things. First, just a follow-up on an email that I sent all the commissioners on August 9th regarding oil spill placed in North Warren at the Bozine One Oil Mall. There were five violations noted at the time. DDP is supposed to notify me, although they're renegated, as of right now, I haven't heard from them. One of the outstanding violations had to do with the storage of the waste material that came out of the well, and it's unknown what that was, whether it was brine or oil or, I'm told that it's probably not hydrobracking fluid, but it's unknown. At any rate, it's stored on the property in an old dump truck. DDP has said that that dump truck meets the state requirements for a container, even though it does not have any kind of lid on it. The county zoning ordinance requires that all waste materials be kept in a container with a lid. I went by the property just on route to this meeting and noticed that they put a piece of plastic over the top of the dump truck. But it just seems to me like, I, I asked the commissioners to inquire as to whether or not you could enforce the zoning ordinance there and her back, so I don't know if you had any kind of response yet.
So first of all, I'd like to apologize that we haven't gotten back to you quicker. I have a draft email that I just haven't sent yet. Dan Glotz and I went through the zoning ordinance with a fine-tooth comb in order to have like a proper response to like the request that you made. The zoning ordinance does not require a waste, just like a, a unit to have a lid. The part that you were referring to was the definition section of the zoning ordinance, which basically, for the purpose of all the places that it's referenced, like a waste receptacle, the, the definition in that ordinance is a, a container that has a lid on it. And, and the whole goal there is, you have a, a house, you're demoing it, or you're removing material from it. In the zoning ordinance, there are places that you have to put that waste receptacle. And so the, for the purpose of the zoning ordinance, that waste receptacle is considered a dumpster that has a lid on it. It doesn't have anything to do with oil and gas or waste products related to that. After talking with Dan extensively about it, our determination was that that is DDP's responsibility. We don't regulate or, in any meaningful way, oil and gas extraction, you know, or the waste material byproduct. Our hope would be that DDP would be hypocritical of that situation and take a serious look at it, especially if it poses some kind of health risk to the community, you know? You had mentioned in yours that there were fumes or there was some kind of odor related to the waste material. That's very concerning. And so I think that, you know, the goal would be to have DDP take a look at that and have them, that's their fundamental responsibility. If they haven't done that, I, I'm not really sure why. My understanding of it is that Dan Glotz contacted, DDP had conversations with about it, and they were taking a very close look at it, and that they had a lot of issues with it. So I haven't followed up with him to know what else he's found out about it, but that's, that's my understanding of it at this point. Like, does that...
Also, the definition you're saying doesn't apply to all waste containers in the county?
It doesn't mandate that you have a lid on the container. What it's saying is, is that a, a waste receptacle with a lid on it is considered a waste receptacle for the, every place that it's cited within the ordinance. So like I said, when it says, "Waste receptacles that are to collect construction materials should be at the rear of the property outside of the view of the public," they're referring to a box with a lid on it. Like, it's not stating that you, like, if you, any waste that you get rid of has to be in the container with a lid on it. That's not what it says. So, and there's nothing in it... So, and there's nothing in it that references oil and gas waste material. It's all related to construction materials.
Well, the ordinance doesn't reference oil and gas period. It does say any business, does, or, no, I'm sorry. But it does reference any business. And there is no exclusion in the ordinance itself. If we're going to start excluding businesses, shouldn't we actually stipulate that in the ordinance, which businesses are going to be excluded from the ordinance?
Well, I, I think that waste is also outlined in the ordinance as well. It talks very specifically about construction-related materials, not oil and gas wastewater. And the reason that is is because we rely almost entirely on DDP in order to regulate oil and gas extraction in the state of Pennsylvania. Like, we don't have people, we don't have any staff that go out and look at oil wells, you know, any of that kind of stuff. I mean, that's not our purview. Whereas the, you know, that's DDP's responsibility. You know, and like I said, my hope is that they would do what they're required by the state to do in order to monitor and maintain it. For us to do that would require an entirely new person to be added to our staff in order to just monitor and regulate. And then we'd have to change the ordinances in order to address oil and gas extraction. And I don't know...
I don't think we even can. The Constitution is clear. Counties do not have the authority to do anything with DDP-related issues. We have no authority to do anything.
Well, I, we could argue with DDP about that and then they sue us and then we...
And then we lose.
Well...
Well, I'd like to take exception to that because Robinson Township versus Pennsylvania, in that case, a good part of Act 13 was struck down. And the plurality of decision, the Supreme Court, they said that local governments do have specific rights and privileges that they can enforce zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
And when our zoning ordinance is any business, I take it at its word. I think we ought to have that revised. We're not going to enforce the ordinance with regard to any business, especially when the Supreme Court says the county has the right. And I would hope that our county would exercise those rights that are especially going to benefit the healthy safety of the public. In this case, we've got an open container with toxic waste in it. Kids play near there, pets could get in there, wildlife could get in there, and it's in the flood plain. If that starts leaking, there are all sorts of other problems that are going to have to be mitigated. It would seem very simple to me to simply ask them to remove the waste and dispose of it properly. As I understand it, based on what DDP has told me, it's just a convenience to the, to the operator there to wait until they collect all of the other waste that they apparently haven't collected yet so that they can dispose of it all at once. But why not just do it now?
Probably because it costs the small business more to dispose multiple times.
Well, it, it would cost the small business less money not to be in violation of the, of the environmental act we did with, and have this situation...
If that's true, then that's the DDP and the business's problem, not our problem. We are not the enforcement agency of the DDP.
I understand that, but on the other hand, I think the DDP would be willing to respond to you if you had a request of that material being removed. And also, I don't necessarily say the business has to remove it. It seems at some point it's in the interest of the public to have that material removed and disposed of properly. It's a hazard to the public, it's a hazard to our pets and to wildlife. It would seem to me that there are a lot of reasons that we could intermean that to make that situation safer than it is.
Okay. Well, thank you for your concern. It sounds like Commissioner Agelston is interested in following up on this.
Yeah. The local municipalities. Might, might respect it, not any common law, it's the local municipality responsible.
Yeah, not the county.
Not the county. Would the Commonwealth of Townships, I think?
Well, they're saying that...
Well, yeah, yes, it's their responsibility. My view of this is just that for the commissioners' offices, it's usually a catch-all for complaints, interests, things that are going on within the community. My goal is always to try to pass that on to the agency that's responsible. If there are citizens in Commonwealth Township that are really concerned about that waste material, then absolutely I want to pass those concerns on to the DDP and have them take a look at it. There have been several situations that I've been confused as to why they've acted the way they have related to different issues, you know? So from my perspective, I just keep talking to them and trying to push them to address them in whatever way they can legally. And that's, that's about the extent of it, you know, at least from my perspective.
Mr. Selly?
I agree with you. When you have a problem like that, go to your supervisors. They have paperwork and ordinance says that can help you. Tell them to start pushing. It's their township, they should take responsibility to deal with the DDP. I always remember we were up to the courthouse one day and the DDP was here prior to your times. And I had their regulation book. And he turned to me and said, "How'd you get that book?" I said, "You didn't give it to me, but I got a copy of it." The DDP's very slow moving. You have to get your municipality involved so that they can get a hold of the DDP and say, and I agree with you, the stink, the children that, when you're, you know, little children love to climb on stuff and that little truck sitting there idle and, "Oh, we've got some leopard in there we can fly with." And all of a sudden, you got six children. Yes, I agree. But you have to get your township involved, working with you because like the commissioner said, they really can't do nothing but turn it into the DDP. Get your municipality involved. They've got nuisance ordinance, which could that classify as a nuisance? Yes, because it endangers children and a lot of wildlife. So I would go to Commonwealth Township and say, "Gentlemen, you have to do something."
And I would say that from my experience, Commonwealth Township, the supervisors there have been generally interested in these kinds of issues.
Yes, they are.
I think that they might be...
But you have to bring the problem to them. They don't look at your problems. Nobody does. You always have to bring the problem to the leadership.
Well, I have made them aware of it, but just a little perspective from the citizen's point of view. When I go to DDP, they tell me it's not their jurisdiction. And when I go to the county, they tell me it's not your jurisdiction. And it's, it seems that a lot of this stuff is being handed back and forth and that there's a lot of gray area in there about who takes care of these kinds of things.
But one thing you didn't mention, you didn't go to the Commonwealth Township and they didn't tell you it wasn't their responsibility. It is their responsibility to protect the residents of the township. I would advise you to go to Commonwealth Township and tell them what your problem is and have them work with you to get it finished.
I don't, I don't know how DDP could possibly say that it's not their responsibility to evaluate the material from, from a drilling operator.
Well, that's not what they said. It's about a lot of other issues there. For example, they tell me all the structures there, that well platform is not their jurisdiction, that falls into the jurisdiction of the county. And I go to the county, they say, "No, everything is the jurisdiction of DDP when it comes to oil and gas."
If we tried to outlaw that platform, it would be in their jurisdiction. Like, because people, different communities have tried to do it and they come in and sue them and say, "No, you have to allow it." Like, so what DDP told me is the only thing they approved is the drillable, just, and the, the well platform is not something that they actually approved. And that that has to conform with the load zone and also to other rules, especially ones in the flood plain.
Okay. Well, there's one o'clock.
A wonder issue? Quickly. A couple months ago, I, I asked the board if they had an opinion about brine spreading in the county. And this issue has, has become, it's been covered by the newspaper and there's more and more people talking about it. Ninety-six percent of the brine spreading in Pennsylvania is spreading, unless it could be in a lot of it right here in one county. And I'm just wondering, in light of recently worrying about health concerns, whether or not the board has, I believe Commissioner Capro and Palaskey, you said that you would defer to the municipalities of how they would handle it. And I know that at least one of you has gone to a meeting or two about brine. Has there been a commission, has there been a board?
So, so it, obviously, this has been discussed quite a bit in different circles. We had a lot of discussion about it at one of our town hall meetings. This is something that's going to be like an ongoing discussion, ongoing research effort because there's a lot of layers to it, regionally, statewide. So first things first, we're currently in the process of communicating with all 27 municipalities in order to get survey information back about who actually utilizes brine on their roads. What we've found so far is that actually there, of the ones that have responded, there aren't that many that do. Warren County, that said, we still have quite a few that we have to get responses for. Most of the ones that use brine are economically challenged, in my opinion. They, they, to try to purchase a more robust solution is, is quite expensive for them. Would require a great deal of planning and the management of the roads and so that's why it's been used for so long. The brine operations in the county, generally speaking, are, in my opinion, wastewater operations to try to dispose of material that it's difficult to dispose of otherwise. And that's why it's so cheap. Since the last time we talked about this, I've had conversations with companies outside of the county that produce brine, but it's not the same type of brine that everybody's talking about this from wellheads. It's actually a more natural type of brine that's been approved by DDP and gone through an authorization process. They have never really made an effort to have any legitimate business in Warren County because of the utilization of wastewater on the roads as a result, making, you know, the cost of material really low. And through discussions with them and other experts, right now, we're pivoting to try to have a discussion about how we can provide alternative solutions at a reduced cost to municipalities in the county so that they can use other materials, you know, on the roads that not only are more affordable, but have, not more affordable than brine, that's going to be darn near impossible, but more affordable than the alternatives and that are, that is going to produce a better result. From everybody that I talked to about brine wastewater, it, you have to put it on the road constantly because it doesn't have a very long shelf life and it actually makes the roads spongy and, and actually deteriorates the road to some degree. So even the purpose, the, the only advantage to it is that it's practically free. So, you know, so my point is, is that we're looking at it, you know, it's something that we want to try to, you know, help municipalities with, in my opinion, especially ones that are, you know, don't have the money to do a lot of different stuff with their roads. Having lived on rural roads a good chunk of my life, I understand the, you know, dust problems and all the other things that go along with it. The road deterioration in and of itself, often we get our roads to stay, you know, consistently. So there's a lot of work and research being done into it, you know, in order to, to try to figure out ways to work with the municipalities. Like, an example of a, of a proposal is, you know, building a couple of tanks on either end of the county and having material trucked in and filled up so that then the municipalities can draw off and so that they aren't paying to have this material brought into each individual municipality, thereby getting a bulk cost reduction for alternate material and then also a reduction in time and dispersion. You know, those types of things are the types of things that we want to look at. And obviously, one of the main things is to try to evaluate it to determine safety. You know, you know, I think that that always has to be something, that has to be part of the discussion, you know?
If I could cut this conversation off. The 5th of September, I believe, is the next COG meeting and the COG seems like the most appropriate place to have this conversation rather than rehashing it multiple times in commissioners' meetings since we have no authority to do anything about it. So I would urge all of you to discuss this with the township supervisors at the COG meeting where it makes most sense.
Well, I would say that we have a leadership role in some way.
Through the COG, you do. Yes. Thank you.
As you well know, the DDP says no brine being used, so until they change their mind, nobody's going to get to use the brine.
Exactly. Any project updates? Hearing none. Department or committee updates? Very good. Hearing none. Commissioner's schedule? I already mentioned I may not be here on Wednesday, but I'll call in.
I have a very busy day tomorrow. I'm going to be all over and I know that there's a meeting with the sheriff tomorrow afternoon at 1:00. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to make it. I'll try.
Do you just want to see if we can reschedule that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else scheduled wise for this week? All right. I have some points for general discussion, they'll wait. No calls for executive session as far as I'm aware. Anything else? Let's go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.